All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us. My name is Patrick McTeague. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Board of Fort Lauderdale. I'd like to ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much for that. I'd like to introduce our other board members, starting from my far left, our newest member, Mr. Alexander Spence, welcome. Ms. Jackie Scott, Mr. Steve Gannon, Ms. Sherri McCartney. On my right, we have Mr. Byron Donaldson, Mr. Dutton, yep, Whitney Dutton, Kevin Buckley, and then myself again, Patrick McTeague. Do we have an approval or any comments on the minutes from last meeting? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion moved.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. We'll introduce city staff. I'll start with the interim city attorney, Mr. Dwayne Spence. Good evening. And the urban, the principal urban planner, Mr. Jim Hensel. And if you'll introduce other staff with us this evening?
Sure. Good evening. To my left is Michael Ferreira, Tyler Leform, who stepped away, Lorraine Tappin, Jonathan DeAngelo, and Adam Chanel is on the other side of the building, audience.
Very good. Thank you. And I think that's it. We'll go right to case number one. It's where in the city, the individual speakers, yeah, when they come in. Has staff sworn in any of the speakers that wish to do it, or do you want to do it when we get to the public portion?
You can do it at this moment.
Okay. Anybody who wishes to speak, if you could please raise your right hand. And Mr. Spence?
Sure. Do you swear affirm that the testimony that you give tonight will be the truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. When you approach the podium, indicate, state your name, and also indicate whether or not you have been sworn. And indicate whether or not you have been sworn when you, when you reach the podium.
Just confirm it, yes. Thank you for that. So we'll call case number one, which is UDP V25003. And I'll ask for any disclosures. Mr. Spence, Alexander, do you have any disclosures? Okay. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I did a site visit. I spoke to the president of the Tarpon River Association, Vanessa, and I spoke to several other people in the neighborhood.
Okay. Mr. Gannon?
Site visit.
Ms. McCartney?
I'll be recusing myself as a member of my law firm, which is presenting the case.
Very good. Mr. Donaldson?
I did a site visit.
Mr. Dutton?
Site visit.
Mr. Buckley?
No disclosure.
I also did a site visit.
Good evening. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Chair, board members. My name is Ryan Horland. I've been sworn in. I'm an attorney from the law firm Tripp Scott, here on behalf of the applicants, four homeowners of Tarpon River, three of who which are here tonight. And this is to request the vacation of a right-of-way that abuts all four of their homes. The right-of-way, as depicted, would be split between the four property owners, which sits between Southwest 10th and Southwest 11th Street. One of the main reasons for this request is for safety, to prevent unwanted activity in this area so close to the applicant's property, including vagrancy, as the applicants over the years have found some trash and some other legal and illegal items in that area. To get into some history on the right-of-way, the right-of-way, previously known as Southwest 6th Avenue, connected, was originally dedicated as Metcalf Avenue to the public as a thoroughfare in the plat of Lauderdale from 1910. The dedication stated, and as you can see on the screen, the right-of-way is, the street as dedicated went all the way up. That's the main red. The black arrow depicts where the current property and right-of-way is today. The dedication stated that the streets, avenues, alleys, and boulevards represented on the company plat are hereby dedicated to the public use as a thoroughfare. The definition of thoroughfare is pathway between two areas, a street. This plat also dedicated certain areas as parks and green spaces. Over the years, Southwest 6th Ave. started to be eliminated through various replats. This is the 1925 replat. Before this replats, Southwest 6th Avenue was about 20 blocks or so. After this replat, there was only four blocks left. This is the 1950 replat of the area. It took away more of Southwest 6th Avenue. After this replat, there was only around three streets left. This eliminated the thoroughfare between Southwest 11th Street to Southwest 11th Court. Following the recordation of the 1950 plat, Southwest 6th Avenue only connected Southwest 9th Street and the south through Southwest 11th Street. In 1997, the city passed an ordinance formally vacating the area of the thoroughfare between Southwest 9th and Southwest 10th Street. And this, and this is the last remaining portion of the originally dedicated thoroughfare, south of Southwest 7th Street. These are some current pictures of the right-of-way. This is from Southwest 10th Street. It's a mixture of grass, dirt, and a little gravel. In the middle here, there are, this is an alleyway that would be kept. However, as you can see, a bit farther out, there are concrete posts in the middle, separating the two portions of the right-of-way. And this is the south side of the right-of-way. It's just grassed over with trees. Here is a aerial of the area. The top yellow arrow is where Southwest 6th Street still exists today. That is at Southwest 7th. And as you can see, everything south of that has been previously vacated, replatted, to the benefit of those property owners of Tarpon River. And this is the last remaining piece. We believe the request meets all the specific criteria set out in the city's code. When a right-of-way is dedicated to public purpose, is very specific to what is dedicated to, on the plat. This was dedicated, as seen previously, as a street through a thoroughfare. The right-of-way is no longer used as a street once dedicated. Additionally, there are other routes to the eastern portion of the alleyway here. There are three to four homes there that do park cars in the back. I walked this area on Sunday. There are entrances for them. On 4th Street, there is a driveway that has been created there, and the alleyway extends throughout. Additionally, both north and south of this right-of-way, there are alleyways for homes there to also have their vehicles go through. And those areas do not have the, a right-of-way thoroughfare fair to, to have those come through, and those residents still get through just fine. Currently, there's no improvements in the right-of-way for pedestrian usage. It's not paved. There's no sidewalks. It's grass and trees. The applicants have only ever seen a few people go through, and it's usually having, walking with dogs, which is more treated as a greenway or a park than a thoroughfare as the street was once dedicated to. And there are currently no utilities in this area whatsoever. So I do want to point out that in a interrogatory with the city, the city in 2023 admitted that the thoroughfare is no longer being used as once dedicated. And I want to bring to attention that there is a 1981 court case that states that, actually with the city of Fort Lauderdale as the defendant, which ruled against the city, that a right-of-way, if dedicated as a street, cannot be turned into a park. And I do want to make one last thing clear about when a right-of-way is dedicated. When it's dedicated, it doesn't become city-owned land. It is an easement to the public for it to use as the right-of-way was dedicated as, in this case, a street. The city then holds it in trust, and once that right-of-way is no longer used as the way, it goes back to the grantor. The grantor, 1910, however, transfers to the subsequent property owners, which are today the applicants. And then, the, this was not a part of your backup material, but I do want to point out that I have with me 15 letters of support in vacating the property from property owners in Tarpon River. 14 out of the 15 live in the direct vicinity of this right-of-way, either on Southwest 10th Street, Southwest 11th Street, or Southwest 11th Court. And I do want to make note that in your backup material, one of the emails from a resident you received dated July 2nd, that residence since has signed one of our letters of support, because they had previous voice opposition. Now they have support. So we do have direct vicinity neighbor support in vacating this right-of-way. Thank you.
Any questions for applicants counsel at this time? Okay, I see none. Thank you. So now we'll call members of the public up to speak. I'll do my best to read the names. There may be some doctors, because I can't get some of the handwriting, but.
Chair, before, before you do that, would you like to accept the staff report into the record as part of the record of this hearing proceeding?
Absolutely, yes.
If,
Is there anybody from staff that would speak on it?
Entertain, if you would entertain a motion from a member of the board to accept the written staff report in the backup as part of it?
Sure, absolutely.
I move to make the staff report part of the record.
I second that motion.
Very good. Perfect. Is there anybody from staff that would speak on it, or just let it stand on its own? Like, I don't know if anybody wants to.
Staff is available for questions, but, but the content of the.
Second was Mr. Donaldson down at the end. Okay, very good. So I'll call you up based on this, yes?
Just call the row for me.
Okay.
Mr. Spence? Are you in favor?
You're, you're voting on making this part of the record. Just push the button right there. You're okay, you're okay.
Apologies, yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mrs. McCartney, you are abstaining? Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. Dutton? Mr. Donaldson? Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Me too, yes.
Yes, and Chair McTeague?
Yep, yes.
Okay.
So individuals who come up to speak, you have three minutes. I'll set a little timer. When you hear the alarm, please wrap up your comments. It's best to always introduce new information, new ideas, than overly repeating as you'll get further. And then if there's somebody who's a president of an association, they have five minutes. Just let us know. The first person is, I believe, Stephen Weist. And the second is Robert, and I'm not, yes, please do. The person on deck would be Robert. I'm not sure if it's Cetron, that's a C? Okay, so you'll be on deck. So if you'll please just say your name and.
My name is Stephen Weist. I have, I have been sworn in.
Thank you, sir.
I live at 605 Southwest 11th Street, approximately 50 feet from the, at the, applied for vacation lot. I've lived there for 30, 30 years plus. I am a homeowner. The, the area in question does serve a public purpose. We use it quite often. I see people using it all the time. The south portion is pedestrian traffic, people with dogs, families, people just walking around the neighborhood. The nor, the northern portion, we see people coming in there, a lot of utilities also, but see people coming in there to access the backs of their properties, especially on the eastern side. There's a couple cottages in there, and if you look at the road, you can see it's clearly used. See, the thing is, it's a four-city block long road, and this right-of-way falls right in the middle. Goes from 4th Street to 4th Ave. to 8th Ave. The 6th Ave. right-of-way falls right in the middle, and it is a real, it is, it's a relief. It's a long block. People use it to get through when it's hot, you know, you want to cut your walk a little short. I know a family that uses it daily. They cut through. They go to the alley. They walk the alley, so they're not walking in traffic. But I oppose. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Robert, yes, sir. Cetron, and the person on deck will be Susan Peterson.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Rob Cetron, and I live directly across the street from the parcel in question. I see it every day, and I want to share my, my perspective as a neighbor who knows the corner of our community well.
Has, have you been sworn in?
Yes, I've been sworn in.
Perfect.
And I've been sworn in. Cool, sorry. We've already had, we already have plenty of safe, well-maintained places nearby for families and dogs to enjoy. I walk and run my dog Milo two to three times a day, and not once have I thought about using this parcel. It's nothing but gravel, mud, and pine needles, as we see in the pictures, just not a space that's, anyone would consider safe or welcoming. Unfortunately, it's been more than just these, just unused space. For a year, our street dealt with Airbnbs rented out for large parties. When police broke them up, groups of kids would scatter, and this lot became their cut-through. It turns into a pass-through for trespassing, petty crime. That's something neighbors here haven't forgotten. Now, we also have to think about the very, very real risk of homeless encampments. Even our riverwalk downtown La Solis is a showcase area for Fort Lauderdale, has struggled with them, as the Sun Sentinel has reported. It is a problem there. It's almost certain to be a problem here. While there are policies that allow cleanups that don't, that don't really solve the problem, they just create more strain on police and city resources. That brings me to the core concern, how we spend taxpayer money. The parcel doesn't bring recreational value, community benefit, or economic return. Maintaining, maintaining it would mean spending money on rank, ranking pine needles, cleaning trash, and responding to complaints. This is not an investment. It's a drain. I would urge the board to consider carefully whether this land truly serves our community. From where I live and see it every day, it doesn't. Let's use our resources for projects that genuinely improve the neighborhood and make Fort Lauderdale stronger, and not on a small lot that proves to create more problems than solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a question, Chair, for this gentleman. How many homeless encampments have you had there recently?
I personally own a house in another area with a homeless encampment. I'm willing to send you the whole video on it.
No, no, no. I don't care where you live now. Do you live, do you live right there?
I've seen, I've seen two homeless transient in the last year.
You've seen two people that are homeless in there?
Yes.
In a year? Okay, good. That's what I need to know.
I live in 518 Southwest 11th.
Perfect, thank you.
Directly across.
Thank you. Ms. Peterson, and on deck, is it Bree?
Good evening.
Comus, yes.
Check, check, check. Good evening. My name is Susan Peterson, and I'm a past vice president of Tarpon River Civic Association and River Oaks Civic Association. And I owned one of the houses in question next to this right-of-way, 601 Southwest 11th Street, along with my mother, Julia Peterson, from 1998 to 2003, when I sold it to Ms. Prescott. And my mother, I'm dedicating this little talk to my mother. She moved from California to be closer to me in 1998, and we were building a mother-in-law suite in my house on 18th Street, but I spent about a year in permitting in this office as, as owner-contractor, and it was moving along slowly. So we rented 601 Southwest 11th Street in 1998 from Terry Camp and his partner to live in during the renovations. And after a couple of months, my mother said, I really like this house. Asked the boys if we could buy it. So we were able to buy it for $85,000 in 1998. And my mother lived there very happily until 2000, when she had to go into assisted living, because she had more medical needs. But the charming thing about the house was that right-of-way. They had magnificent tall pine trees there. They were just gorgeous. And I don't know if you're aware of this, but I think it was in 1999, the city had made plans to put a sewer line right through there. And the civic association, Tarpon River, found out about it, and we had a meeting, and we had a gathering and a meeting with city officials on the site, and Mayor Nogal came to support us. And we asked them to reroute the sewer to preserve this right-of-way as it was, because as the previous speakers have said, it's a very little charming part of what the old neighborhood was like that you can walk through, which is a thoroughfare for walking. When I first came to Fort Lauderdale, there was a sandy road that went through there, and, you know, cars sometime went there, through there. So the pine trees were a great consolation to me. I lived in the house during reservations, renovations, and they were just so beautiful. And so the city changed its mind and decided to reroute the sewer line. And that must have cost the city a certain amount of money to change the plans, but in deference to the request of the neighborhood to keep that open for all of us, they changed the route of the sewer line. And so my mother was able to enjoy her time there. And so I had the house rented out later on, and I decided that I would put it on the market, and Ms. Prescott bought it for me. And there was a lady who lived on the other side, where Joe and Wendy live, and she was Myrtle Feaster. She was a Fort Lauderdale native who grew up here. She was in her mid-80s, a great friend of my mother. So, and there are so few elements of that original neighborhood and neighborhood plan left. And I don't think it's a good argument to say, because the city vacated so many blocks of 6th Avenue, that therefore we need to turn over the rest so nobody else can enjoy it. I think it's a, the right-of-way is an important public amenity for health. My mother once had to be hospitalized when she walked all the way down to 4th Avenue in the hot weather. There's no shade there. It's a very long walk, and I enjoyed walking there too, including with my dog during the time. So please rule against vacating this property. I don't think it is the right thing to do at all. I think it's a selfish move. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you can just confirm that you were sworn in before, that you had spoken?
Pardon?
Can you confirm that you were sworn in, or have you been sworn in?
Yes, I was sitting over there.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, next up is, I believe, Bree Cummins, or Kumus, Kumus, yeah. And then Sally Allhouse, at that, Allhouse?
I'm Brucey Cummings from Tarpon River. I'm also an ex-president, and I'm opposed to giving this piece of land up. We have been using it for 30 years. It does, as the gentleman said, cut right in between, so that we don't have to walk all the way down to 4th Avenue. We can cut through this area. And we really did want to improve the area and add some trees and maybe some benches. We were, we were talking with the city and planning on that when we were abruptly stopped. So that is, I think, because the neighbors on the south end had a problem with that. There were the neighbors on the north end. I know I spoke with both of them, and they had no problem. They would love to see it beautified. It has been, and it continues to be, a thoroughfare. We've never, as a board and as president, we've never had any complaints about homeless, or garbage, or anything else. I think our Tarpon River is a very peaceful area. We have very, very little crime at all. So, and we have very little open space. This is one piece that I know the city wants to spend more time developing the tree canopy. It's a very wide area. It would be perfect for more pine through there. It is a really nice little piece, and I am definitely encouraged to keep it public. Thank you.
Ms. Cummings, can you confirm if you were sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mrs. Allhouse, and next will be Mr. Jay Scheckman.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, my name is Sally Allhouse, and yes, I have been sworn in. I'm a little confused. I live at River Reach, which I'm assuming is fairly removed from this parcel of land. However, after doing a pretty thorough Google search, I still don't know where this parcel is. And that's probably because I don't live in the residential neighborhood. I live in a condominium across the canal. I'm opposed to any kind of changing of rezoning at this point in the Tarpon River area, only because we have down the pike the Live Local Act that has been approved by the state. And to my understanding, that act is going to give developers the ability to have a broader reach when it comes to their ability to expand. Tarpon River by history, I've lived at River Reach over 45 years. Tarpon River has always been a lovely little residential neighborhood. I look out, it's like looking at a park, at the tops of the trees. I'd hate to see anything happen to, to that beauty. Living on the Tarpon River, I know that there was an application that was going to be submitted. I'm not sure what happened to it, for Coconut Drive. That parcel, by way of history, is owned by the same, the same person, and that would be a pretty sizable piece of property that would be ripe for development right on the New River, or the Tarpon River, I should say, same thing. But I do have questions, and I don't know if this is a question-and-answer period, but I guess the rationale for the rezoning is a safety concern. So I guess I've answered my own question there. But I don't understand what medium density means as far as the number of units that would be permitted on that parcel, should, should the owners decide to sell to one developer?
Pardon me, ma'am. I think you may be on the wrong item. So this is a item for vacation of a right-of-way and not a rezoning?
Yes, sir.
This isn't Edgewood?
No, no. I know. I'm on number one.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but I believe in, well, in the notice I got, it mentioned medium density. And is that a question that can't be addressed under item number one?
No, it's a question that can be addressed, but they've, so the proceeding is they're requesting to vacate a right-of-way. Part of the notice is to inform you of what the, where the property is and its current zoning. But they're not seeking to change the zoning. The notice is telling you what the actual zoning is of the property.
No, I understand. You put, this is a very methodical process. You do one step, and then the next, it opens the door for the next step, and then the next step. So I'm just trying to close the barn door, so to speak, before any of the cows get out. I do notice that the grantor is the applicant that will be the beneficiary of this right-of-way, and one of those applicants is JJ Greco LLC. I don't know who that is. A quick Google search, which, it's Google, so don't hold yourself to it, would be Josh Branstead. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I don't understand why an LLC would be applying for this right-of-way when it appears that it's all residential. It's four property owners that are banding together to create this. It's four property owners that are banding together to create this vacation of the right-of-way. Does anybody know anything about JJ Greco LLC?
Well, the applicant can address it and rebuttal after all the public comment.
Are the applicants here tonight? I don't know.
Yes, you heard from their attorney at the beginning of this item.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But the applicants themselves are speaking through their attorney?
Yes. Their attorney is acting as their agent.
Okay. Well, like I say, I don't even know where this piece of property is, and there's no map, and I'm, now I'm getting into complaining, and that's not what we're here for. Just in a final comment, I am opposed to any kind of zoning change in the Tarpon River neighborhood, only because of what's coming down the road. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Scheckman, and after that is Gloria Reese. Mr. Scheckman, were you sworn in?
Yeah.
Very good.
Excuse me. Jay Scheckman, 811 Southwest 7th Avenue. I have been sworn in. So I, I was the former president of the Tarpon River Civic Association, and in that capacity, like, I know for a fact that there are, there's no shortage of people who, and with my own two eyes, as someone who lives and walks within walking distance of this piece, that people are, no shortage of people who are walking through and using this to traverse just a pathway from one place to another, 11th to 12th Street, and vice versa, in terms of walkability, and then also through the alley to access homes along the backside for the north part of the right-of-way. As you can see from the pictures, it's clearly looks like a road, and I have seen cars of residents in the neighborhood accessing the back of their properties, like, through that part on the north side of the, of the right-of-way. So, I mean, as you can tell from looking at an aerial, it's a very wide block, and the reason, one of the public purposes beyond, you know, the existing transportation of walking and driving that it's used for is, is just to cut up the neighborhood. Vacation of this right-of-way would immediately result in an adverse impact to the mobility within the neighborhood itself. You know, so, I mean, talk about a public purpose. I mean, in the last eight years, I've seen every right-of-way that's ever come to this board, there's never been a vacation of right-of-way where there are people that are actively using it, you know, to get from one place to another. It's usually, you know, a little dead-end area that leads to nothing. It's not people going for, like, using it, or maybe it's part of a larger development. But, look, I, you know, I understand, like, why they want it, you know, why they want it vacated, and the, the main, you know, people spearheading the charge own both sides of it. So if you vacate it, they can just maybe use it as another lot, or they could sell it, probably worth $400,000 or $500,000, you know. So I would, I totally get the monetary incentive to doing that, but I've never seen any homeless people there. This has been the Planning and Zoning Board already. I'm surprised that hasn't been mentioned, and I believe it's been in emails, like, estimating maybe 20 years ago that it came and it lost. And what happened was during, you know, COVID, the city, you know, was, was laying down some, some mulch, and, you know, part of why it's not that inviting is because any time anybody's tried to make it inviting over the last 20 years, the same people are, come out and prevent them from doing that, right? Because it would just, it would encourage, then it would be inviting, and it would be used more, and there'd be less of a case for them to be able to win it and then sell it. So, you know, that's why it's not all that inviting, but it is very much used, and it should be improved to meet its intended purpose as platted and as utilized today. Right now, I think there's a lawsuit. That's another thing that hasn't been mentioned, where they, they're, they're in suit against the city. And the courts basically said, oh, well, why are you coming straight to the courts instead of going through the process that you already have? And the reason is because they know that they'll lose if they do that, and because there is a public purpose. And I would be very surprised if, if this were, you know, approved or voted or supported by anybody on the board. It would be a huge disappointment to the Tarpon River neighborhood, an immediate adverse impact to mobility, and, I mean, it's just the most clear-cut, dry case I've ever seen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Reese, Ms. Gloria Reese, and up next is Vanessa Apotheker.
Hi.
Good evening. Have you been sworn in?
I have been sworn in.
Very good.
Good call.
State your name and off.
I will. My name is Gloria Reese. I've lived in the Tarpon River neighborhood since 1994, and in my home at 627 Southwest 11th Court, on the corner of Southwest 11th Street and 11th Court, since 1999. I haven't gotten that in my notes, but I've been, in the past, heavily involved with the Tarpon River Civic Association, and I've been familiar with what has gone on with this saga for many years. And the, our attempts to develop it in the sense that we were putting pathways and making it more inviting as a pedestrian walkway have been thwarted by many means by the adjacent homeowners over this period. So that argument needs to be taken off the table. We tried. I've argued twice against this request for vacation when it was initially filed with the city over 20 years ago. That request was denied by the board, by this board, on November 17th, 2003, and its appeal was denied by the City Commission on March 2, 2004. The request is once again before this board because the applicants have sued the city in a complaint for declaratory relief, which is currently pending in Broward County Circuit Court. Tonight's hearing is a result of Judge Bowman's August 13, 2024, order staying the case and administratively closing the case, in which he gives the plaintiffs an opportunity to apply for voluntary vacation by the city, and that's a quote from the order. So here I am again, for the third time, arguing against this request for vacation. I'm not going to go into a lot of technical stuff, but I would like to repeat two of what I think are my strongest and previously stated objections, and hope that this board will once again deny this request. The Sixth Avenue right-of-way is the only pedestrian pathway between Southwest 10th Street and Southwest 11th Street, between Southwest 4th Avenue and Southwest 8th Avenue. There needs to be a break in these very long streets, and the Sixth Avenue right-of-way has always provided that route. It's not safe for pedestrians to be forced to walk so far, approximately four blocks, to head back home with a crying baby or exhausted dog, or if the walkers caught in the rain or overwhelmed by the heat. The applicant, or the main applicant, Ms. Prescott, clearly stated before this board and in my presence 22 years ago, that she and the co-applicant, who is her daughter, wanted to own the property at issue so that they could build a much-needed garage. Ms. Prescott's son-in-law owns a commercial landscaping business at their home. It's no secret, the trucks and heavy equipment are always there, logoed, and have been for years. Unless I'm missing something, the presence of this business in a section of the city zoned RD 15 violates the zoning laws and should not be given the opportunity to expand. And I'm not here to try to hurt him, but enough. I guess that about sums it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vanessa, Vanessa Apotheker, and up next is Patty Wiest.
Hi, I'm Vanessa Apotheker. I've been sworn in.
Great.
I'm the president of Tarpon River Civic Association. Our board opposes the vacation of this right-of-way, and I think it speaks a lot that there are four presidents, previous presidents, myself included, here, that have been fighting this for years, and it's been denied so many times, but here we are again. This right-of-way, without a doubt, serves as a public purpose for the good in improving the quality of life in the Tarpon River neighborhood. In my three years as president, I've received countless emails and calls from residents who feel the same way. I've received none in support of the vacation in my years as president. In addition to the letters presented in the exhibit, we've received recently at the, for the last, one of the last things we mediation, 25 declarations from residents listing all the ways they utilize the right-of-way. Our neighborhood children, mine included, ride bikes through the right-of-way, residents walk through it to cut through the neighborhood. It's frequently and publicly used by residents of the Tarpon River community and serves as a public purpose. And also, this is the first time I'm hearing about any homeless problems or trash or parties in the right-of-way as well. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, Miss Wiest is up, and the final speaker I have is Kimberly Slaven-Houth. The floor is yours. Have you been sworn in?
Good evening, Patty Wiest. I've been sworn in.
Great.
Hi.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to start off with, I've never seen any homeless people in the right-of-way. And then second, just, I want to reiterate, back in December 2003, when it went before the public, or the Planning and Zoning Board, and then March 2004, where it was also appealed with the Planning and Zoning Board, I oppose this vacation for all the same reasons that back then that was asked of this vacation. This serves as a public purpose, it's for safety. I have, I've lived 605 Southwest 11th Street. I live next door to the applicants. I have used this area, walking through with my dog, since 1995. I have photographs of people driving from 10th Street to the alleyway, along with a woman who couldn't be here today, where she accesses her cottage off, in the alleyway, it's in the back, but she accesses it through, going through the sixth way, right-of-way off of 10th Street. For 15 years, she's been doing it. There's a couple other cars that go through there, too. I have photographs of plenty of cars that have been using from 10th Street to Sixth, the Sixth Ave, right-of-way. I also have pictures of people walking through it, and it happens to be because I'm there. Also, maybe it's not, the applicants feel it's not being used, is because I was there personally a couple times where I was approached, was I one of the people that live in the home, because they were told it was private property, along with being there when the city workers were applying the mulch and gravel. The city worker was shaken in his boots because he was screamed at, get out of here, it's private property. So maybe that's part of the reason they don't see people using the right-of-way. I don't know. But I oppose this vacation. It serves as a public purpose. Pregnant women use it with their family, they come through with their strollers, bicyclists, kids, and thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Kimberly Slaven-Houth? She, there she is, speaking of babies.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Kimberly. I have not been sworn in.
Okay, good. And if we could have her sworn in, please. I knew we'd get one.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Excuse you.
Floor is yours.
My name is Kimberly. I live at 621 Southwest 11th Street. My husband and I purchased our home November of 2020, so we've been in the Tarpon River neighborhood for about five years. And I am currently the vice president and secretary of the Tarpon River Civic Association. I live just down the street from the route, from the right-of-way. I'm so sorry. Hey, excuse you. Vanessa, do you mind? Thank you. I live just down the street from the right-of-way. I use it regularly with my son, with my dog. We walk through it, we use it to access 10th Street. We use it to, you know, walk down the street and avoid the sidewalk-less, you know, streets in our neighborhood, walking down to Wells Coffee, whatever it may be. I use it to access the alley. My neighbors use it to access the alley. I oppose the vacation. It absolutely serves a public purpose. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote? Or did you have, did you want to do any kind of wrap-up or any rebuttal to what, some of the things you've heard?
Yes, a few rebuttals. To start off, to address, yes, there is a lawsuit, just a little background on that. In 2017, the Tarpon River Mobility Master Plan was published. It classified this area as making it into a pocket park. Then a few years later, there was starting to be work done by the city on this area, and that's when a lawsuit was filed to see what rights the property owners had. As previously shown before, state law states that a right-of-way that is dedicated as a street cannot be turned into a park or green space. So even though green spaces and parks are great for neighborhoods, this area cannot be turned into one. The Sarah Horn Greenway is in the direct vicinity of the thoroughfare, in the left, bottom-left corner. That's an area that's dedicated as a park for residents to use. The city has improved upon it in the last few years. So that is the, so, this thoroughfare in question, it was dedicated as a street. State law says that you can't turn it into anything else. It's not paved upon, it's grassed over, can't make it into a park, or put just it sidewalks. To address the concerns about the few residencies that use the alleyway to get to their properties, as said before, there's about four of them, and it's, they're all the first few homes off of Southwest 4th. There is a installed driveway for them to access that. The alleyway is staying the exact same, just in other parts, just north, south, and then across Southwest 4th. Those areas all have alleyways. A few of those homes do have vehicles that use them. In those areas, they just use the alleyway to get to their homes just fine, so the homes in this area would still continue to be able to use it. Seeing if I miss anything else. And last concern, these are four residents who have lived here for many years, on both sides of the property of the right-of-way. They're all in this together. There are no talk, there have never been discussions about selling to developers. There are no development approvals or permits that accompany this application. If 10, 15 years down the line, somebody new owns it and wanted to, that would be a totally different issue, and would have to come before this board and work with the city on that. But I just want to make that clear, that there is no development associated with this, vacating this right-of-way. Thank you.
Any members of the board have questions for the council?
So, Chair, before you go to the board, if I can have an opportunity, because we have new board members, to just kind of explain the process and what the board should be doing at this moment.
Please do. Thank you for that.
If you would indulge me. So, this is an application for vacation of right-of-way under 47-24.6 of the code. What the board is charged with doing is determining whether or not the application meets the criteria for the vacation, and make a recommendation. If it finds that it meets the criteria, and there are five criteria, that they would make a recommendation of approval of the vacation that would be forwarded to the City Commission, and the City Commission will hold two public hearings on ordinance to determine whether or not they vacated. If you determine that it does not, then this board would be the board to deny the application, and the applicant would have to then appeal to the, to the City Commission. So what you are tasked with is looking at the application that was submitted, the staff report, the record and recommendation forwarded from the DRC, and hearing the comments that were given tonight, and determine whether or not those five criteria have been met. Partially, that's the reason why, in your backup, you don't have any information with regards to the past vacation or the pending lawsuit. regards to the past vacation or the pending lawsuit, because the, they're not germane to the determination that the board has to do. The board has to determine, as of tonight, whether or not those five criteria are met. You'll find on page two of the staff report, the start of the discussion of this criteria, you have the applicant's, applicant's argument in addition to what they've made here tonight, but what they've made in their application narrative, and then you have staff's response. If you find that any of these criteria are not met, you are to deny the request for vacation. It was the applicant's burden to show that they've met all five of the criteria. That concludes my remarks here.
Thank you. Was there anybody on the board? Yes, Mr. Buckley.
Yeah, I noticed in the staff report, it sounded like the city was making a reservation, potentially, for putting a pump system in there for the neighborhood. Is there, can somebody address that? A stormwater pump.
I don't know if we have a member of the utility staff to address that. So in terms of the staff review of these applications, you have the different disciplines that look at rights-of-way and the potential uses, and that was one of the comments that was submitted as part of the DRC review.
And the staff report did not suggest we should approve this. In fact, I think staff, if I'm correct, staff did not support this vacation. Is that correct? In the, in the report?
Mr. Schnell, can you address that?
Adam Schnell, Urban Design and Planning, I'm the case planner. You are correct. We do not believe that the criteria for vacation have been met, and the right-of-way still has a public purpose, both for pedestrian access as well as vehicular access.
Can you speak to the comments about the stormwater?
It is a comment by Public Works, I'm not a member of Public Works. Fortified Lauderdale is essentially looking at areas within the Tarpon River area to place a pump station. There might have the capacity to utilize a portion of the right-of-way in the future for stormwater purposes.
Well, thank you for clarifying staff's position and that as well. Thank you.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Chair. First of all, I agree with what Mr. Scheckman said in reference to these vacations of rights-of-way. You know, when they're a stub at the end of a street and it doesn't affect anybody, and the neighborhood supports it, you know, it's been approved and it happens, or if it's connected with a project. In this particular situation, we have a flood of neighbors that have come out and talked dearly about how they use this right-of-way. I visited there today. I understand. I also went ahead and reviewed the 2003 application and what went on as far as the Planning and Zoning Board, as well as the de novo hearing with the City Commission. I'm not sure anything has really changed, but I really, unless there's other board members that want to speak, I'm ready to make a motion to deny.
Are there any other members that would like to speak? Mr. Donaldson?
Yes, I just wanted to re-stress some of the points that Ms. Scott just mentioned. I also have visited the site multiple times and saw people traversing between 10th and 11th. One thing that I noticed was the fact that the 10th and 11th do not have sidewalks. And I think for pedestrian safety, anytime that we're vacating something that creates an easement or ability to traverse from one street to another street that is now four blocks long, I think would be the wrong thing to do. And if Ms. Scott is going to make a motion to deny, then I will be supporting that motion.
Any other members have any questions or comments? No? Okay, Ms. Scott, your motion?
Yes, I want to do this correctly, Dwayne, so I'll ask for you for guidance. I make a motion to deny, I recommend denial of case number UDP-V25003. The facts in the city staff report are based upon the testimony heard by the applicant, and the board hereby finds the application does not meet the following criteria in ULDR 47.25.2 and 47-24.6A4.
I would second that motion.
Okay, based, based on the, your prior discussion of the board members, I did see that you've mentioned the pedestrian usage of the, of the right-of-way, so the subsection D with regards to the closure of the right-of-way shall not adversely impact pedestrian traffic, and the subsection A, the right-of-way or other public place is no longer needed for public purpose. Are you finding that it does not meet any of those two subsections?
Correct.
Okay. I'll let the motion reflect that.
And I would just mention that the motion was made in the negative to deny, so when you say yes, you're, you're voting to deny. If you say no, then you're voting to uphold, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Everyone clear on what that means? Because it's a little, okay. Very good. Please call the roll.
I seconded it.
I second denial.
Yes, yes, or no?
Yes.
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 Okay, good. Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Mr. McCartney? And Chairman Teague?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your participation on that. Item number two, case number UDP-P25002. Do we have any disclosures, starting with Mr. Spence?
No disclosures.
Okay. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I spoke to the applicant's attorney. I also spoke to the president of Edgewood, Kitty McGowan.
Mr. Gannon?
Spoke to the applicant's attorney and did six drive-by-site visits over the last seven days.
Correct.
Had a text from the, from another attorney.
Okay. Ms. McCartney?
I spoke to the applicant's attorney.
Mr. Donaldson?
Site visits and applicant's attorney.
Mr. Dutton?
No disclosure.
Mr. Buckley?
Site visit, like Mr. Gannon, many, many times, and I spoke to the applicant's attorney.
Okay, I've done site visit and also spoke with the applicant's attorney. The floor is yours.
Okay, so I was disclosing on the wrong item.
Okay.
But I did speak to the applicant's attorney. Sorry about that.
No problem.
I was thinking Edgewood was next.
Yeah, so you're good with case number two? Ms. Scott?
I'm good. I spoke to Mr. Locker.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Locker?
Good evening to the board members and to the chair, to the members of the board. Robert Locker, on behalf of the applicant, I am joined with, by Elizabeth, with police land surveyors, who were also the applicant. We represent the owner. The request before you tonight, as your staff report indicates, is for a boundary plat of the property located at 1055 North Federal Highway. It's on the west side of Federal Highway, just as you come around the bend, heading from Sunrise Boulevard onto Federal, or you're already on Federal, but continuing on to the north. The application, and we'll go to the next slide, is, as I said, just a boundary plat. Couple important elements of this. This plat has been reviewed by the Florida Department of Transportation, by Broward County Traffic Engineering, as well as the City of Fort Lauderdale's Traffic and Mobility Department and Engineering Department. When you go out there today, there's another number of curb cuts along federal highways, you all know, three, actually, three, in and outs. That will go away with this plat, and access to the site will be dedicated to one way in, one way out at the northern entrance, northern end of the plat, which will enhance traffic flow along that curve. In addition, there's additional right-of-way dedication, which at its far southern end is a, close to 11 feet in width, that'll be dedicated to FDOT. It tapers as you head to the north. We have reviewed the staff report, we agree with all of its recommendations and its conditions of approval. This project or this site was also the subject of a site plan, which has already been approved by the City of Fort Lauderdale, was also the subject of a development incentive agreement approved by the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, as well as an easement. This is the plating part of the process, the most technical piece of it, which is required prior to building permit. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the attorney? Yes, Mr. Gannon?
Just a quick one. I think you might have mentioned this. So is this project a live local? That's why we haven't seen anything?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, so it went straight through, okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any members from the public wishing to ask any questions or speak? Okay, seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote. Any thoughts, any motions?
I'll make a motion. I motion to recommend approval of case number UDP-P25002, based on the following findings and facts that the city staff report and the testimony heard here tonight. The board hereby finds that the application meets the applicable criteria, the ULDR cited in the staff report, and any conditions of the staff report are part of this approval. Is that correct?
Second. Second by Mr. Gannon.
Yes.
Mr. Dutton?
Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, item number three, case number UDP-Z25001. Disclosures. We have Mr. Spence. Any disclosures, sir?
Yes.
Did you speak with someone, or?
I was emailed by the attorney, the attorney of the case.
Attorney of the applicant.
The attorney of the applicant.
Perfect. Ms. Scott?
Yes, I spoke to the applicant's attorney. I spoke to the president of Edgewood, and I did a site visit.
Mr. Gannon?
Text from applicant's attorney, and a site visit a while back when we had a case in the area there, right next to it.
Ms. McCartney?
I had some communication with the applicant's attorney as well.
Okay, Mr. Donaldson?
I did a site visit and had a conversation with the applicant's attorney.
Mr. Dutton?
Site visit.
Mr. Buckley?
Correspondence by email with the applicant's attorney.
Okay, I also received an email from the applicant's attorney. And we are receiving some new information that staff had that's being presented to us.
Yes, excuse me, Chair, Tyler's distributing is what we received after the PZB packages were sent to you all, are letters in opposition to the rezoning, which you have now copies of.
So just one, just St. Jerome's?
Yes.
Did you get one?
Yeah. One is in email format, the other one's a letter.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Gunster, you ready?
I'm ready. Well, we'll address this in a minute. This is the first time I've seen this letter, so.
Do you need a minute to read it?
No, I can imagine what it is, but we'll, we'll address it. Looks like it's a lot of, you know, traffic and safety concerns, but I'm not sure. But we'll, we'll, we will look at it and we'll address it as we go through, if that's okay with you guys. Good evening, I have been sworn. My name is Heidi Davis with the law firm of Gunster. I'm here tonight on behalf of ECO R LLC, the owner of the property, and DCR, the developer, for a rezoning of the property located at 1,000 Southwest 26th Street. The property is located south of State Road 84, east of I-95, and west of Southwest 9th, excuse me, 9th Avenue. The property is a vacant five-acre parcel which fronts Southwest 26th Street. The property is currently zoned RD15, which permits 15 dwelling units per acre. The property is surrounded by a mix of zoning districts and uses. To the north, across Southwest 26th Street, is high-rise hotels and commercial uses. To the east is the church and school, which is zoned community facility. To the west, property is zoned B2 and RS8. To the south, it is zoned RD15, where there is another five-acre parcel with one residence. To the southeast, properties are zoned RM15 and RMM25. This is the city zoning map, where you can see a variety of the various different zoning districts surrounding the property. The photos show the variety of uses that surround the property, including the Holiday Inn, which is directly north of this property, the St. Jerome's Church and School, and a vacant parcel which is already approved for development, for, I think it's a residential mixed use, that the city already approved. The properties to the west are zoned B2 with multifamily dwellings and single-family homes. Again, this application is only for the rezoning of the property from RD15, which is what it is today, to RM15. A site plan and plat are being worked on and will go through the process shortly thereafter. This application is not to increase the density on the property from 15 dwelling units per acre. It is only to allow a townhome development on this property. The maximum density for the five acres, based on the RM15 and the RD15, is 75 dwelling units. But based on the development regulations in the code, and large dedications that the developer will be making, and a proposed conservation easement that will be on the property to preserve trees, the maximum amount of units that can be on the property is approximately 67 dwelling units. The proposed application satisfies the rezoning criteria per section 47-24.4D, in that the RM15 zoning district is consistent with the residential medium zoning and the land use and the city comprehensive plan, all of which are 15 dwelling units per acre and all medium or residential medium in the land use. The use as a townhome project is consistent and suitable with the surrounding area, and there will be no adverse impacts to the character of the area. The rezoning to allow the townhouses will also be consistent with the mix of housing types in the neighborhood and create a seamless transition from the high commercial, high-rise development to the north, and community facility to the east, and the mixed housing in the south and west. The property is designated medium residential on the city's future land use map, which permits, again, up to 15 dwelling units per acre. The proposed rezoning to RM15 complies with the city's future land use designation. These are just a few photos of the various housing types that are currently located in the surrounding area in this neighborhood, and which the townhouse development that will be proposed will be consistent and compatible with. This slide shows a comparison of the permitted uses within the current RD15 district versus the proposed RM15 district. Again, we are requesting the rezoning only to permit the development of a townhouse project, which is permitted in the RM15, but not in the RD15. The current zoning RD15 and the proposed zoning RM15 both permit at 15 dwelling units per acre or up to 75 dwelling units on the property. The plans on this slide are schematics based on a preliminary review of the development requirements in the code. On the right is a conceptual townhouse development, which can have a maximum of 67 dwelling units. Under the current zoning of RD15, the conceptual cluster home development on the left would permit a maximum of 66 dwelling units on the property. Cluster developments typically are larger Cluster developments typically are larger housing products, creating a higher price point based on the square footage, which doesn't really fit within this neighborhood. The square footages of the proposed townhomes are more suitable and consistent with the character in the surrounding area. Again, the site plan is currently being worked on, but some features include the maximum of 67 dwelling units. It'll be two stories of a townhome with private rear yards, and each unit will have ample parking with a garage and parking in the driveway. And due to the beautiful trees on the property, there will be a conservation easement recorded, which will preserve existing and relocated trees. The landscape plan will incorporate lush landscaping and buffer yards around the entire property, including healthy trees that will be relocated into these buffer yards. Additionally, the applicant will be dedicating right-of-way consisting of 25 feet on the north side along 26th Street, where a sidewalk and street trees will be part of the site plan, as well as dedicating 25 feet along the west side of the property. As you see in the photos, the wall will be removed, and the property line will be set back an additional 25 feet. On the west side, currently, there is a 25-foot right-of-way unimproved, and with the dedication, there will be a total of 50 feet in this right-of-way, creating a large 50-foot separation between the property and the closest neighbor to the west. We did hold a public participation meeting on August 14th. Notices were mailed out to the property owners within 300 feet, as well as both the Edgewood Civic Association and the River Oaks Civic Association. Our site plan is being developed, so once it is completed, we have committed to presenting the townhome development to the Edgewood Civic Association at their October 1st meeting. We will present to River Oaks as well. Two residents that live west of the property attended the meeting. Their biggest concern, understandably due to all the flooding that occurred these last few years in this neighborhood, which some residents are still trying to fix their homes, is the development's drainage and stormwater management plan. Our site engineers are working on all of these plans, and both the city and the county regulate and review these to ensure that there will not be any runoff from the townhome project. We must contain all stormwater on our property. Swales, trenches, all are being designed to capture the stormwater. Oops, sorry about that. This slide shows a conceptual drawing of maybe what the townhouses may look like. We are planning on submitting an application to DRC and work with the city on the site plan and plat. In sum, again, this application is only to rezone the property to RM-15 to allow a townhome development on the property. We didn't want to do clusters, we only wanted to do townhomes. It's not avoiding you all. We don't want to not come to you. That's not a process we wouldn't mind. We're here, we can, we have to go through the plat process, we would go through if we wanted, we just did not want to do a cluster home. Site plan and plat will be submitted as soon as the plans are finalized. We're working with the city in Broward County on a tree mitigation plan to preserve and relocate as many healthy trees on the property as possible and to create a vibrant conservation easement that'll allow for the protection of these trees in perpetuity. Thank you for allowing us to present this evening. We have our team here if you have any questions, and I would love to reserve time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Mr. Gannon, do you have a question?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
Yes, Heidi.
Sorry, yes.
I lied to you in that text that I had no questions.
No, please, go ahead.
I'm apologizing in that.
No, good.
So, so the difference, as I have proved, the difference between RD-15 and RM-15, the dimensions seem very close to the same, all the other things, the height, all that other stuff, except that the RD is a duplex, means you can only put two townhomes together, put it that way, and then you have a gap between the next and whatnot. So those, I think, are the only appreciable differences.
The cluster.
To the cluster, comparing to a cluster which will be in RD-15, keeping the same zoning.
Correct.
So the reason, the reason you guys decided to go with townhomes instead of cluster was to save expenses on building or to make a difference? What was?
No, I think it's because the cluster homes under the code require certain floor-area ratios to be a larger product. It requires like 3,000 square foot minimum, 1,000 square foot on the floor area ratio. So it's a larger product. Here, you know, the, the maximum we're looking at are like 1,500 square feet for these townhouse projects, 15 to 1,800, which would kind of come back into that townhome.
Okay, I didn't see that. And staff can confirm that, I'm sure, right? It's, yeah, okay, great. I didn't see that difference there, and that made sense. Okay, do you have an aerial of it by any chance? Yeah, I didn't.
The only aerial I have, I believe, is this one. Is that helpful?
That's perfect.
Okay, good.
So I want to mention that Barbie and I took a trip there for a nearby site visit last year, maybe it was, and we saw what you saw in your show, and you're thinking, there was almost a wall almost around the whole place. The entire place, this parcel, is, it's multi-blocks, it's overgrown incredibly. We dubbed it the time, "The Land That Time Forgot," is what we said. Amazing that it's still as it is amongst everything else and left that way. We even saw a couple of driveways on the south to some funky little old Florida homes, and one was even a little geodesic dome shed or something. It was like really, anyway, it was really something to us. So you somehow got, your applicant got the top half of that property? Was it, did all the same person own it?
Yes.
And they sold half of it?
Yes.
They still keeping the bottom? Okay.
Yes, and I actually did see a development, like a for-sale sign on the south. I'm not sure, is that true?
Yeah, the family is, it's my destiny, so.
Right, right. So, yeah, it's, it's two five-acre parcels, and our client purchased the north five acres.
Got it, okay. Thanks a lot. That's all I have.
Yeah, Heidi, what did you mean by the townhomes would be more suitable for the character of the neighborhood?
The size.
The size. The price point?
The price point and the size, yes.
So would you go back to the slide that has a picture of what you're saying you probably, hopefully, are going to build? There you go.
Sorry, yep.
So, looking at that, you're looking at a single-car garage. Am I correct?
Some have double.
Oh, some have double?
Yep, mhm. So they'll have two parking spaces inside and two on the driveway. Again, this is a conceptual drawing. We have not submitted, we have not finalized plans, so this is just conceptual.
And unfortunately, we don't get a bite at the apple as to what you're going to do. We just are here to rezone it, so we, we have no dog in that fight, apparently.
Well, I don't know if it's a fight. I hope it's not a fight, and I think the staff is helpful on that end. Yeah, he's very helpful.
I'm just saying that we're being asked to rezone a property, that we don't have the option of seeing what the final outcome is going to be of a rezoning.
So it's interesting, because I asked Mr. Hetzel early on, saying that I thought townhouses had to come to Planning and Zoning Board. That was one of my original questions. I'm like, yeah, we're going to go to Planning and Zoning Board, and he's like, no, you don't come to Planning and Zoning. So I was all ready to come to you guys. It was just that the staff in the code says that you don't.
Right, and you can do, well, whatever, I'm not going to get into that. The other question I've got is, this is in Edgewood.
Yes.
So why is River Oaks involved?
It's the two homeowners of civic associations that are closest.
Why didn't you send it to Kohlhamick, too? I'm just kidding. I can't figure out why you included River Oaks, but that's fine, that's fine. Okay, that's all for now.
Anyone else has a question at this time?
The usual question, guest parking?
Yes. We have, okay, besides the four parking spaces that each of the homes have, there's also 11 guest parking spots, at least, that are in the, the proposed site plan that we're working on.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Donaldson, were you, you're on it?
I just wanted to, you know, sort of, on Jackie's point, when we're really looking at this, I have more concerns when I'm looking at taking something that, if we're rezoning, that then gave you the ability to go higher than what the last one was. So I was looking at this as to what is the difference? The difference is more, if I was the president of that nearby neighborhood, is not going from a 35-foot, which is what the RS8 can do, the single families can go to 35. So we're not putting something, cramming something into a neighborhood that is going to go to, you know, 60 feet by changing the zoning. So, so in that, I just wanted to make sure that, and are, as you're, and I don't know for, for city staff, whether or not we can, the dedications that you were putting in with the 25 extra feet, so we had a 50-foot buffer to the west, and the 25-foot buffer on the north side, is that going to be part of the record so that they don't come back and build it out?
That's, that's, we're, we're doing that per the plat, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't something that was going to come back to Jackie's point and make us look bad later.
No, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Spence, did you have something you wanted to say?
This is a bit of an out-there question, but you stated in your plan before that you would be moving healthy trees out from this area, or possibly keep in the area, but with the amount of potential parking spaces, pavement for roads and whatnot, would you have enough space in this area for the majority of the trees in the area that is already there?
Yes, so that we've done a tree study on the property, and we've catalogued every single tree that's on this property, and some are not healthy at all, some are exotics, some are medium health, some are average, above, fair, and some are really good. So what we're doing is we are preserving the really good ones, and we are relocating the above-average and fair ones into the landscape plan and buffer yards around the entire property. So we have an entire, it's probably like almost an acre of land in the northwest corner of the property, which has a lot of, very of those mature trees that we're keeping, and we're going to clean out the, the bad stuff. And then along the south side, and the entire buffer along the church, and along the south, along this, oh, I don't have it here, sorry, along the, so along the south where it's that 50-foot buffer yard, so the 25 feet plus the buffer yard on our property will in, you know, contain these trees that are either preserved in place or relocated. And we're working with the county on, we have to pull a permit, we have to get a permit for this, this property, and, you know, go through the process.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Buckley, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess a quick question for staff. What's the maximum height in this zoning district?
It's 35 feet.
Thank you. Ms. Scott?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you another question in reference to this one-way street.
Mhm.
Is that going to remain one-way?
So I was told that, you know, we are dedicating the 25 feet as a right-of-way. I, I think that the, our traffic engineer said the best maneuver would be to keep it as a one-way, so it doesn't bottle up the church, it doesn't bottle up any of the traffic on that side. The church, when it comes in and does its traffic pattern, it comes in and loops around and goes right back up to 9th Avenue. So the only people that are really using are cut-through people, and that's what I'm assuming the neighborhood is going to say, because there is currently traffic that cuts through this neighborhood. So putting it two ways, that's up to engineering and that's up to the city.
So right now, it'll be like a circle? Go up that street, go around and come back out through the other? I guess, I don't know.
So we will have only one access point from our property, and that will be a left-only. That's the only way that they can go, is left out. And then they'll go up, and it's hard to see on this, but that dead ends into State Road 84, and then they'll have to make a right and make a U-turn if they want to go to, to I-95, or they'll go straight east back to where downtown is, US-1.
Good, Ms. Scott?
Yes, I have, thank you.
Okay. We're good for now. Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Okay.
And did you have something on the tip you were about to say?
No, I was just going to, on rebuttal, I'm going to read and see if there's anything that I need to do on that.
Perfect. We have some members of the public that wish to speak, starting with Mr. Tom Tuberville, and next will be Mr. Ted in Surratt.
Hi, good evening. I haven't been sworn in, sorry, I was late to the meeting.
At this time, any members of the public that are looking to speak on these items, would you rise to be sworn? Raise your right hands for me, please.
Everybody in the public who wishes to speak, please raise your right hand. Thank you, correct. And, oh, you have that, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you give tonight would be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Very good. You state your name and you're off.
I'm Tom Tuberville. I'm vice president of Edgewood, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself, because this did not go before the board, I didn't have any vote on this. But off the bat, I'm just, I'm really against any rezoning that's more dense. I understand they're both 15s, so it's 15 units per acre, but I find it hard to believe that a developer would want to rezone something to not make it more dense or more profitable, if you will. We saw a lot of pictures and talk of existing surrounding zoning is 15, 25, but I didn't hear much about the RS8. I live in an RS8, I'm in a single-family home, there's, I didn't see any pictures of single-family homes. My neighbor's in a single-family home, the people across the street from me are in single-family homes, the people that moved in with children are in single-family homes. What's out there today, I mean, it's all impervious. I get their zoning on the books right now, and I'm fine with the neighborhood with the zoning that's there today. I do not like rezoning for the more dense right off the bat. We had a flood in 2023, so every time I see more impervious, I really cringe at the more impervious, the, the rendering we saw. Nice, it looked like a jail a bit. I'm, I'm assuming that the, the garage counts as parking spaces. We all know, no one's going to park there, so I have a feeling these cluster slash townhomes are going to have three slash four bedrooms, a lot of sleep, three slash four cars. I saw a spot for one car. No one's going to park in that garage. You're going to have parking along the streets. There's going to be no way for any emergency vehicles, anyone else to travel through, garbage trucks, anyone. Take into account, just think of Victoria Park, nice neighborhood, but you cannot drive through there. I don't see how anyone, how any emergency vehicle gets through there. And the, the traffic, so right now, it's, it's a one-way. So it's, it's westbound only, so it's a left-out. Everyone's going to have to do a securitis move if they want to go west. Coming in, say if they're coming in from the east, or from the west, I imagine they're going to cut through the lower parts of the, of the neighborhood to go east, and then turn right back around and then circle back and do the counterclockwise movement into that property. And that's just going to be a bunch of fast-moving cars cut, cutting through our streets. And the, the trees, I find it, I'm sure that you've got a certified arborist that did a, a tree survey. I just, I just wonder how, what the, how many, what the percentage of sick trees versus healthy trees are, how many exotics versus straight-up oaks are there? I mean, so I, I just, I would like to really ask for an independent arborist to take a look at that and do a tree survey as well, but, well, that's, that's all I have, but thanks.
Thank you for your time.
Can I ask Tom a question, Chair?
Yes.
You know, the frustration is, we're here just for the rezoning, not anything to do with the site plan. However, what I can't figure out is, the zoning is basically the same, slightly different. They have a legal right to develop their property, and I know you guys all know this. So what, what is the difference, honestly? It's going to be developed no matter what.
I get that, and I know it's already on the, 15 on the books.
I just need to understand why we should not rezone it, from your perspective.
Or I can ask you, why rezone it? It's already RD-15.
Well, they have the right to request it, Tom, and I'm not. Well, they have the right to request it, Tom, and I'm not advocating for this, I'm just trying to make everybody understand, we're limited as to what we can do. So I really want to understand why you guys don't want the rezoning, because you're going to have cluster homes there, or you're going to have townhomes, whatever, so.
I get that, but I would just question the reason why to rezone it, and, and I don't know. I think you somewhat explained it, but I didn't fully understand it.
Right.
Okay.
Recap to 35 feet.
It's the same height, 35 feet. It says it right here in the code.
And then another worry you have is that I don't know if that opens the floodgates for live local or not.
Can we just confirm with staff, so the same number of units, Jim, they could put cluster homes that would equal the same amount of units as, as townhomes?
Yes.
So that doesn't change? From my perspective, the only difference I see is that they don't have to come back to planning and zoning. They go right to DRC and...
I know, I wanted to re-stress.
Well, then, why re, ask for rezoning?
Thank you for your...
If it's the same thing.
For your time, thank you. Okay, Mr. Insarera is up, and next is Kevin Clevinger. Mr. Insarera, are you speaking on your own behalf or as a president or such of an association? President?
Yes.
We got the man, all right.
My name is Ted Insar, I'm the president of the River Oaks Civic Association. I've been making site visits to this piece of property since 1962. The one thing you asked, State Road 84 separates River Oaks from Edgewood, but to tell you the truth, our two neighborhoods are so strongly bound together that, that is almost, you know, we, we act as one, River Oaks and Edgewood, always have. You know, and, and actually, Steve, we're, we're proud that it's like the, the piece of property or land that time forgot. We used to play there as kids. I, I don't understand why, like Jackie was saying about the rezoning, you don't need it, I, just something doesn't sound right. And when these, they, they talk about all of the trees and, and some of this, some of that, I've dealt, I've heard, and I'm sure you have too, we have a Marina Landing going on, we're going to do the same thing about the trees, we're going to go through, and then next thing you know, all of them were diseased and all of them were cut down before we had a chance to do anything. So that whole thing about that, I, I don't, I don't believe that whatsoever. And, and the St. Jerome's, you, you got the letter from Father Joe, I'm an active member of the St. Jerome's Church. 20, it's, State Road 84 is actually 24th Street, and this is 26th Street, and there is no 25th Street. So this just runs parallel, and it's, not only is it one-way, but it's a dead end. So you have to come up here, and then if you wanted to go east, you got to go south, and then you got to go west, and then you got to go north, and then you got to turn around. So you're just flooding the traffic through this neighborhood that is an all-residential neighborhood. And, and St. Jerome's Church is an elementary school, and 26th Street is their pickup street. That's where the cars line up for pickup at the end of the day. It is not, you know, it's, it's just a small street, one-way, and also, she showed a picture of the empty lot that's already going to have a massive building, I mean, that is just right there. And then you're going to have, I mean, how much can one neighborhood take, you know, of traffic, of concrete, like Tom said about, we already have the flooding, so let's build more concrete? You know, you know, and then there are, there are multiple things going on with this site that are all leading towards the owner's intent to develop a 66-town home unit. You saw the, look at all the trees, you can't tell me you're going to be able to save all those trees and put in what they want to put in. The rendering that they showed, I didn't see any trees in their rendering whatsoever. I mean, once, once you have a piece of property like that and you're going to put that, that amount of homes in there, the trees are going to have to go. And I've been to many meetings with the city that they're trying to increase the tree canopy, you know, by 33%. Well, you know, this is going to take another hit back for that, and that, that is something that, that we need to look at in the neighborhood. And I, I was talking to Chris Cooper, and, and he was telling me the difference between the RD and the RM. Now, he also said the RM permits everything that the RD does, except you can have townhomes, multifamily lodging, and lodging is in there, that word, that's a scary word, and as well as mixed use. So it's everything that the RD is with townhomes, multifamily, lodging, and mixed use. Now, I'm fine with the way the zoning is now, leave it alone, you know, we don't need to increase the zoning, because once we do, like, it's, it would be scary for me to just to change the zoning without knowing what really they're going to do. And once they have that zoning, trust me, I've dealt with developers and attorneys and all this stuff, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't bank on what they're going to tell you they're going to do or not going to do. Once they get the zoning, it's in their pocket, then the neighborhood is up to their mercy. And, but right now, it's fine, we're good, leave it the way it is. St. Jerome's is 100% against this, they're afraid of the traffic, they're afraid of that's, 26th Street is their pickup street.
And the archdiocese of Miami.
It's a, and the archdiocese of Miami, you all have the letters, and like I said, not only, that's a, a dead end, not only one-way, but dead end. You can only go south, like this, follow the red, and then if you wanted to get back on 84, you got to go south, then you got to go west, then you got to go north, and then you got to go east. So, I mean, 84 is already a mess the way it is. This is the, State Road 84 is on the corridor, they're going to build like crazy because down State Road 84, like they already said, and they can live, do the live local. So we don't need, well, that's already a given, what they're going to do to State Road 84. We can't let that leak into the neighborhood. Leave it at State Road 84 and give us some sense of community and some sense of neighborhood without now suddenly State Road 84, oh, let's go to 26th Street, let's take that, let's take everything that we can possibly take. We're good with the way it is. I, I don't have enough information to, from them to say, yeah, let's rezone it. Oh, and another thing, River Oaks Civic Association has never heard anything from these people. What they said about, we've contacted that, no, we've never have whatsoever.
Thank you for your time. Next speaker, sorry, I thought the alarm would go off, I didn't realize, I thought it was still counting down, it's weird that...
Oh, yeah, no, no. Really?
So this is Kevin.
Yes.
Clevinger, okay, and you've been sworn in now?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
My name is Kevin Clevinger, and I reside at 2650 Southwest 12th Terrace, directly adjacent to the, the proposed new development in Edgewood. I'm here tonight to share my concerns as a resident. In April of 2023, I'm sure you all are familiar with the flood, the city went through one of the worst flooding events in history, in just 12 hours, we had more than 26 inches of rain, and for days, three days afterwards, our neighborhood remained flooded, underwater, filled with contaminated water and sewage. 279 homes in Edgewood sustained major flood damage, with many taking on four or more feet of water, mine included, so did Claudia. Yep. Most of us are working-class families, we didn't have a ton of options when it came to the flood. Many neighbors stayed in their damaged homes while trying to rebuild, some are still doing it today. As of today, a year and a half later, we still flood every time it rains for more than 30 minutes, this week included, our road floods, and it's the one right next to this proposed property. Every storm brings fear and anxiety. We text, me and Claudia text each other every time, we're like, is our road flooding, do I need to come home? I had to apply flood barriers for my home just to keep the water out in case these floods come, because our, our roads and our homes are at the same level. Now with this new proposed condo development, I worry that things will only get worse. While building codes require a new housing to have a finished floor elevation at least one foot above the base flood elevation, this simply pushes displaced water elsewhere into our backyards. Our backyards flood every single time it rains, and this property that where they want to build actually sits lower, so it takes on some of the brunt of the flooding that we get every time it rains. Beyond the flooding, we also deal with serious traffic issues. So we talked about the, the church and that one-way street, so if you just do the math, there's 64 or 67 units, they said there's four spaces for four, so that's 268 cars, not including the guests, on a one-way street that is utilized for the pickup of the, the kids every afternoon. There are two cars, there are two lanes of cars on a one-way street to do the pickup. They also go down 20, Southwest Ninth Avenue, and that's also blocked, so you actually had to go into oncoming traffic just to get into our neighborhood from that little spot, not including the Friday night's events where they have the nightclub, they utilize that street as parking every single Friday night. It's, it's two cars, you know, all the way down, they go, they utilize some of the Wells Fargo where it used to be, they utilize that empty area as parking as well. And then they have the, the St. Jerome Fair every year, and that's used, that's, that's all, that's where everybody parks to go to the fair, and that's, that sits right in, right next to the 26th Street. So the Osceola Creek, I know this is not even on the map, but it's what causes the flooding in this neighborhood. I've sat in city commission meetings where Dean Trentalis talked about it, Ben Sorenson talked about it. It was a county river, and so they didn't really have any way to fix it, but when that floods, it's the overflow from the airport, the airport floods into that creek, that creek floods into our neighborhoods, and they haven't fixed it. And there's a pending lawsuit that was filed in 2025 against the contractors that actually did all of the work to replace the infrastructure in our neighborhoods, because when I bought my house in 2023, it was all torn up, they were putting all new stuff in, and then when the flood came, we're like, why didn't water go anywhere? It just sat there for three days. And the only way they got the water out of the neighborhood after it sat there for three days was to run a hose into the sewers on our side of the street, through the, the hotel parking lot into the main city street, and that's when all the flooding actually went away.
Jeez.
So.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Sorry the alarm again isn't going off, but that was your three. Thank you so much for your comments. And we also have Kitty McGowan. What's my, what am I going to do, turn this? Good evening.
Good evening. Just down, short people. First of all, I just want to say, that gentleman who just spoke, you need to join the Edgewood Civic Association, so, my name is Kitty McGowan, I'm the president of Edgewood Civic Association. I live at 910 Southwest 30th Street, yes, I have been sworn in just recently, and on behalf of the board, I say, we, we oppose this change in zoning at this point, and I vastly feel it's premature and not really been fully baked for so many reasons. I did not need to do a site tour, as I grew up there. I went to St. Jerome's, I've been a resident of Fort Lauderdale since 1967, I used to play in that parcel and, you know, where the trees were there, and yes, it is a disaster right now, there's no questioning that. There's a lot of homeless we've been dealing with there and a lot of unsavory characters to that, so we're not opposed to improving the neighborhood and improving the character of open space. What we're saying is that you can just look at that one photo and say, that's the only canopy that's remaining in our neighborhood. And so it's, all you have to do is look at the pictures and say, a 25-foot setback to that, that proposed thing, that entire line of trees that's on 26th Street is gone. I mean, there's just no way. So it's, to start, we asked, until today, I had no previous engagement from the developers. Unfortunately, they have, you know, inferred that they sent letters to our clubhouse, which is not a mailing address. That is being corrected as we speak right now, but until today, I have not had any communication with this proposed change in zoning. As everybody else has said, and I'm not going to like completely, because it is a one-way street in and out, there is no infrastructure, planning, or development in this neighborhood, despite the fact we've been the red-haired stepchild of the city of Fort Lauderdale since I was a child. And it's always been a working-class, mixed-use, and it's a vastly diverse neighborhood, from the railroad tracks to I-95, we're a very wide neighborhood that goes commercial, multifamily, there are multimillion-dollar homes on the west side of 15th Avenue. And right down the street from me, brand, brand-new townhomes, and they're saying, oh, yeah, 1,500 square feet for a townhome? No way is a townhome that they're projecting here going to be 1,500 square feet. $670,000, $700,000 townhomes, a block from me are being sold right now, and they're 27,300 square feet. So, I mean, that's just not true. Without, there's three access points to this neighborhood, this section of the neighborhood. Fourth Avenue, it's already being vastly overtaxed because of the airport. Broward County owns that road, and we have, we have all that, sorry, thank you. Ninth Avenue that has one lane turning left, Fourth Avenue that has one and a half lanes. We have three schools, Broward Health, we have the city of Fort Lauderdale building Parks and Rec, there's no access to the westbound property. Yeah, high-density, changing, pressure of live local with that property cross engaging and up, I'm sorry, sorry.
That's all, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, so yes, we vastly oppose this change.
Great, thank you. Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
I have a question.
Seeing none, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask, again, Kitty.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask her a question. Again, come up to the podium, please. All the things that you're talking about are to do with site plan and things that you guys are going to have to get very engaged in. We, as a board, have to vote on a rezoning when a client has the right to do it.
I agree.
All the arguments that you guys are coming up with, you would have, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, you would have the same arguments if they didn't come before us for rezoning and they were going to do cluster homes. I think your issues would be the same, do you agree with me?
I don't disagree with that point.
Okay, so with that being said, you guys, I know you're passionate about this, and I respect your neighborhood, et cetera, you're going to have to get very engaged with staff and get some of these issues worked out.
My response to that...
We, as a board, Kitty?
Yes.
We don't have the ability to do that for you.
I understand, my response to that is that what I have seen and experienced, you change once and you go to here, you change another time, you go to here. And so that, for me, is where you open the door to vastly significant zoning changes, which open the things to other, other opportunities. The zoning has been a big issue for our neighborhood, so that's my only thing, is that why do the changes until we've seen any other plot restrictions or any other changes that they're trying to do?
And unfortunately, it's the way the...
I know, it's the process, I get it.
...code works.
I know, thank you.
And remember, all of us are neighborhood people, so we respect and appreciate everything that you're saying. I just wanted to make that point.
No, thank you. No, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
Thank you, I just have a few comments. I did look through the St. Jerome letter, and again, it's the same type of issues with regard to traffic. We did a traffic study, we don't produce, we don't produce more than the, a thousand trips, it's a lot less, I think it's like 37 peak trips that will come in during those peak hours. With regard to the Southwest Ninth Avenue and surrounding streets, it sounds like that everybody's traveling on the same times, there are schools, I think Kitty said that there's four schools in the neighborhood, so at these school times, there will be, you know, impacts on these roadways. It's existing today, we're not putting, you know, that much more traffic on the roadways and at, probably at different times as those. So we did hire a certified arborist, that was one of the questions. In the RM, in this RM 15, they don't allow, and correct me, Jim, you have the code, I'm assuming there's no lodging allowed in RM 15, and there's no, what do you say, mixed-use developments allowed in RM 15?
Those are permitted as conditional uses.
Conditional uses only, which would have to come before this board to get approved. We are committed to doing townhomes. I know when you do a rezoning to the RM 15, it allows open up to multifamily as well, but I spoke to Brian this morning also about that it is a commitment of ours to only do townhomes and not open it to the multifamily. Again, it is 35-feet height max in the RD 15 as well as the RM 15, as well as the RS8. Regarding the flooding, I know Ms. Claudia's here today, she was one of our residents that came to the public participation meeting, and we talked about flooding, and I know it's such a bad thing in this neighborhood, I wish the city could do more about it. We will, like I said, contain, we have to contain all of our stormwater, I'm hoping that once that right-of-way on the west side is dedicated and the city cleans the drains out more often, that they will be able to maybe use that as swale to catch more. Obviously, the engineers have to, to design it that way, but there will be 50 feet in the back of that property along that west side to collect more stormwater, if that is the case, from the existing flooding that's happening, but ours will be contained on our property. I'm glad Kitty mentioned the homeless and improving the character of the neighborhood. Since our, this owner has taken possession of this property, it is on a regular basis of how much trash and dumping that goes in here... it is on a regular basis of how much trash and dumping that goes in here that they are removing on a weekly basis. It's just a dumping ground right now. So, I, we believe this townhouse development will improve the neighborhood. It'll satisfy the criteria of the zoning, rezoning criteria, and it will be a great asset and character building in this neighborhood. So, thank you very much. If you have any other questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Go ahead. Mr. Dutton?
So, you're committed to townhouses, right, is what?
Correct.
If this did not pass, what would be the commitment then? If the zoning stayed the same, what's the project look like commitment-wise?
66 cluster homes in a price range. That's a large amount. Yeah, so that will be what they're going to be developing.
Yeah, it's hard to, you know, decipher this, especially because everything we've heard, you know, I do agree with everything about the trees. It seems like it's happening either way. I mean, the tree survey is battled either way. I think the big question for us, and just to clarify, the other, this way does not go through approval through us, though. That's the kind of big-
Correct.
Let me ask a question to the staff. If they were presenting, if they kept the same zoning and they were bringing 66 cluster homes, will we approve those? Or would they just go through, just like the townhouses?
The cluster development requires planning and zoning board approval.
Okay. And then, let me ask a question. When we're talking about density, the density is the same in both the RD and the RM?
Correct.
And the height is exactly the same?
Correct.
The number of cars are going to be exactly the same?
The land development code deals with the site improvements and regulations related to landscaping, parking, setbacks, and so forth. So, it covers all that.
Okay. So, the only difference is that instead of being attached more as a cluster? Is that what a cluster home is?
Clusters are attached, yes.
They're all attached.
They're all attached? So, then it just becomes one big, like, snake through there versus more of a break between with the townhouses?
Clusters can be designed differently on the site versus a townhouse development is typically linear. Townhomes that are attached with lot lines. Slightly different than a cluster would not be this similar type of approach from a development. But density, height, everything would be the same.
But isn't a cluster home then typically sold as a condominium?
Yes, typically.
So, okay, so let me ask the neighborhood. You'd rather have condominiums than townhomes?
Single-family.
Here that the cluster homes would be a larger area and higher value. So, as a neighborhood, yes, we would rather have higher value, which is going to elevate the entire-
But then you're going to have more density. You're going to have more square footage.
Why would we have more density?
Wait, wait, wait. If you want to-
Well, because the square footage of the cluster homes are required to be a larger footprint than a townhouse. And if I'm going to have 66 of the same thing and I have a bigger footprint, I'm assuming it's taking up more land than, and so your plat-
Less trees.
And you are, when I'm looking at the site plan, I'm going to see less ground in a cluster community with 66 than I'm going to see. So, I was looking at it from, as I was trying to determine in advance, how would I vote on this? And looking at the pluses and minuses, when the traffic study is going to be the same with the same number of owners. But I could possibly argue that if I were buying a more expensive and a bigger unit, I'm probably going to have more cars than a townhouse. I was looking at green space. That was what I was looking at as a difference, because the heights are going to be the same. The number of owners are going to be the same. And I'd much rather deal with townhome owners than a conglomerate of a condominium association. So, that was how I was trying to look at it. Because all the concerns that you're mentioning are not what this board is voting on tonight. We are voting as to whether or not you're going to have 66 cluster homes or are you going to have 66 townhomes? And townhomes give you more green space. So, that was how I was looking at it and the less stuffs asked.
Do you want to talk to her? Yeah, hold on. In the back, you, yeah, one moment. The public hearing is closed. We gotta see.
So, I was asking, you know, I was asking staff.
Yes. Mr. Donaldson, who do you want the answer from? The city? Or are you speaking with Ms. McGowan?
If the public hearing is closed and I can't ask Ms. McGowan, what can I?
Board, you can speak to them. I just can't have them speaking. It's fine. So, yeah, I'm just clarifying what we got here. Are you speaking with her?
I think it was more of a rhetorical question because of the fact that, basically, I was doing with the staff as to is, was my assumptions correct? And the fact that it's, everything is the same except for the ownership. And thus, if you had a cluster home because of our regulations require more square footage, then I'm probably eating up more land. Thank you.
So, that was not a question, that was a statement. Okay. Ma'am, in the back, I'm sorry, I've closed the public hearing. So, off the, you know, off the record, off to the side. Mr. Buckley?
Yeah. Perhaps staff could explain to the homeowners here what the DRC approval process is and where they have input when it comes to DRC?
So, there's a couple items. This property is going to have to plat, be platted. That will have to go through a process. But plats require a note restriction on the use. So, that you'll, it'll be restricted to whatever use is indicated, which in this case, if it moves forward and the applicant submits a townhouse development project, that plat note will be restricted to such. Dedication of right-of-way occurs with the plat and also any other commitments by the applicant for preservation or whatever easements are needed for the project. So, there's an application process there to guarantee certain things. The site development review process, development review process, if this is a Level 2, which is Development Review Committee, gets filed with city staff and gets reviewed. And we have a DRC meeting, which is open to the public, where the public and neighbors can come see the comments from the technical review by staff and follow the approval process for the applicant, application. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Davis? Yes, sir. Mr. Spence?
Yes, for the applicant. I just wanted to know, given how both the RD 15 and RM 15 zonings both have the permitted use for public-purpose facilities, have your client made any decision whether or not maybe they could pursue a public-purpose facility for this land instead of private homes?
That's a permitted use. I don't know if the neighbors would want a public purpose use on this property. Right. So, I mean, right now, we've looked at just residential townhome projects.
I guess if I could reword that. If, say, this motion were not to pass for you, would the choice of public-purpose facilities, like, say, Park or something else, would that be on the table for you guys? Like, to pursue?
I mean, it's possible. I mean, there is, I mean, I don't have the clicker here to go back. But, yeah, anybody could build anything on this property that's permitted in the RD 15, which allows group homes up to 10 people per, you know. It could be parceled and a lot of different uses that are permitted under the RD 15 zoning, besides the cluster homes. It could be, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry I'm talking so much tonight, but these neighborhood issues are going to get to me.
I understand.
The, if we vote this down, you're still going to develop the land. And I assume that you're going to go ahead and move forward with cluster homes.
Well, you know-
So, you still have the ability to develop, make money, make everybody happy.
Well, I mean, you have to understand that is a cluster home a product that will sell on the property? And that's something that has to be analyzed from a real estate perspective.
Well, just because I'm a Realtor, I'd like to talk about it. No, I'm kidding.
Yeah. We've done, you are a Realtor, of course, and you could talk about it, of course. So-
Yeah, I mean, obviously-
I mean, it's been analyzed on the property and the developer has done an analysis based on the demographics and the surrounding areas and what is selling now. There are certain properties that have been on the market for a long time that are bigger units that we know that have not been sold.
That's throughout the whole city right now.
Yeah, exactly.
But, I mean, the point that Kitty made regarding bigger units, higher price, is tremendous for the neighborhood. It elevates it. So, I kind of understand why that comment was made. This is a difficult decision, that's all I'm going to say.
The townhouse product will be a higher price point than the neighborhood. It won't be, it's per square footage, though, you have to remember. So, if you're building a 3,000-square-foot unit at a certain price point, that's going to be way more than this neighborhood would be developing. If you're doing a 1,500-square-foot townhouse at the price point, which is going for square footage, it's more in line, it's still higher than the single-family homes and some of the, but it's still a higher price, which will elevate and beautify and make this neighborhood much better.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts?
So, the townhouses would be sold fee simple?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing none, I close the forum and bring it back to the board for discussion and a vote. Any other comments?
I'm very torn on this.
Everyone got all their discussion out of them? Yeah, we could move to a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Professor Cupgate?
I move to recommend approval of case UDPZ 25001 based on the findings of fact on the city staff report and the testimony of the applicant. And the board hereby finds the application meets the applicable criteria of the ULDR cited in the staff report. Boards recommend approval of the application. It's subject to all the conditions included in the staff report. That's it.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Spence?
I cannot come to a decision at this time.
We'll come back to them, I guess. We'll give you, newbie, it's hard to be first.
It is fine. Come back around. But- Mr. Dutton?
Very tough one, like Ms. Scott said. But the townhouse product, I definitely believe is a better product, for sure, compared to condominium. And I vote yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Mr. Donaldson?
Same reason Mr. Dutton just voted yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
Chairman Teague?
Let's try Mr. Spence again.
Yes. Mr. Spence?
Yes.
Chairman Teague?
Yes.
I vote passes.
Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Case number four, UDPL 25004.
Good evening. Lorraine Tappin, Urban Design and Planning. This item is a set of comprehensive plan amendments to update references to the proposed 2026 Water Supply Plan and a few elements of the comprehensive plan, including the future land use element, conservation, capital improvements, and the sanitary sewer water and stormwater element. In addition, the amendments include a change in a policy in the sanitary sewer water and stormwater element to wholly incorporate the 2026 Water Supply Plan. Tonight with us, we have Todd Heitzschuh, Deputy Director of Public Works, and George Brown from Hazen and Sawyer, consultant with this, who's done work for the city on water projects, water-related projects for more than 10, 20 years, I believe. So, they're going to give you a summary of the Water Supply Plan. And then, of course, we'll be open for any questions.
All right, do you have the clicker?
What's missing? Heidi.
You can do my comedy routine while we wait.
We're going to charge you for that.
Where's my wallet?
Putting that on your bill.
Look on the floor.
All right, good evening. Thank you so much for allowing us to present the Water Supply Plan. We'll try to keep it quick. Again, my name is Todd Heitzschuh. I'm currently the Deputy Public Works Director, joined by George Brown with Hazen and Sawyer. So, we just, three items we'll talk about quickly is what is a Water Supply Facility Work Plan? We'll talk about the Lower East Coast Water Supply Plan Update from the South Florida Water Management District. And then, we'll talk specifically about the Fort Lauderdale's Water Supply Plan. So, a Water Supply Work Plan is required by Chapter 163, Part 2 of Florida statutes. And what these plans do is they document how municipalities will meet water supply demands for future, primarily by population growth and things like that. Specifically, we are, we fall under the Lower East Coast of the South Florida Water Management District. And they, back in 2024 September, they updated their Water Supply Plan, which is done periodically, about every five years typically. And again, as I stated, they updated theirs on September 23rd, which then requires those municipalities that fall under that Lower East Coast Plan to amend their Water Supply Plan, as well as take those changes and put them into the city's comprehensive plan, which is why we are here in front of you today. The Lower East Coast, you know, extends to Palm Beach, Broward, Miami-Dade, parts of Monroe, Collier and Henry Counties. And these forecasts are generally out to about 20 years. So, these plans have been updated, projected water supply for the next 20 years. And again, they help us to make sure that the water supply that we're given meets the need of the growth in our community. And I will turn it over to George to specifically talk about our Water Supply Plan and how we will continue to meet the needs and demands of our community for the next few decades.
Thank you, Todd.
Good evening. George Brown with Hazen and Sawyer. Hazen is the city's water consultant. And I've actually worked on the city's water supply planning since 1999. So, the city's Water Supply Facilities Work Plan was updated and that update was completed in July 2025. And I will simply provide a very brief summary of the key findings of the document. The city's water service area has not changed for many years. The city is the largest water provider in Broward County, and the city provides water to many communities. Those customers include the city of Fort Lauderdale itself, nearly all of the city of Fort Lauderdale, Oakland Park, and nearly, I believe it's all of Wilton Manor's. The, also, the city provides water to Port Everglades, plus many other smaller communities. The city's primary drinking water source is the Biscayne Aquifer. It's a shallow aquifer. It's just below our feet. And the city has approximately 35 water supply wells in two separate wellfields. The Dixie Well Field and the Prospect Well Field. And these wells are shallow. It's probably about 100 feet deep. That water is- That water is fresh water, and that's what the city treats for its drinking water supply. The city's water service area population is forecast to increase through the year 2045 from this year, currently about 250,000 to 305,000. And that's the water service area. That's all of the communities serviced by the city of Fort Lauderdale. And that's approximately a 21% population growth over 20 years. This slide, the horizontal black line illustrates the city's available water supply. That's what's in your water use permit. It's about 55 million gallons per day. That water use permit is adequate to meet the city's water demand through the year 2045. The city's water treatment is, there's two existing water treatment plants, the Five Ash Water Treatment Plant, which is lime softening, constructed in 1953. That plant is current, is planned for replacement by the city's investment in the Prospect Lake Clean Water Center, which is currently under construction, scheduled to be completed in late 2026. The ci, that Five Ash Water Treatment Plant produces roughly about 50 MGD on a daily basis. The city's Dixie Water Treatment Plant is a state-of-the-art nanofiltration membrane treatment plant, which was constructed in 2008.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Donaldson.
So of, I know that I have friends that get their water from the Dixie, and theirs is still the clear water, where the rest of us that have the Five Ash have the yellow water. So is that, are the new plant going to give us the same coloration that we're getting currently out of the Dixie plant?
The prime, one of the primary goals of this city constructing the Prospect Lake Water Treatment Plant was to remove color, to achieve a color goal of five or less. So the proposed, or the plant that's in construction is going to be state-of-the-art membrane, a combination of membrane treatment and ion exchange designed for color removal. So it will achieve the city's color goal and be very comparable to what's produced by the Peel-Dixie membrane plant.
Thank you.
The Prospect, and I'll just wrap this up in two more slides. Thank you for your patience. The city is currently constructing Prospect Lake. It's going to be completed in about late 2026. And there's a picture of the construction and the city's contractor. And I would just like to compliment the city on this. The contractor is just doing a fantastic job for the city. And I am available for your questions if you have any.
Any questions at this time? Mr. Buckley?
Just a point of curiosity, the membrane plant, is that similar to, say, an RO process?
Very similar. This type of membrane for treating the Biscayne Aquifer, it's called nanofiltration. The only difference between nanofiltration and reverse osmosis is the amount of pressure or energy that you have to put into the water to get it to pass through the membranes. So typically, nanofiltration is used for freshwater, like the Biscayne, and reverse osmosis is used for a salty water. So something like the Floridian Aquifer, which is a much deeper aquifer, which it's much harder to treat. So that, you would use reverse osmosis in that case.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
Another one?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned that we have, according to our contract, our permit, that we have enough to hold us through 2025. How often is our permit that we get? I'm assuming that permit is county or state?
It's a state permit issued by the South Florida Water Management District. So the demand forecast indicates sufficient water to meet demand through 2045. The, I believe that the city's water use permit is good for 50 years, 60 years, something like that?
So if we, at some point, if the growth through adjacent cities, like Oakland Park is going aggressively after development, and some of our other ones that we're selling our water to, so we know that the water usage of our non-Fort Lauderdale users is going up. So if that projection started to show that we didn't have enough in the permit, what is the city's opportunity to get a new permit that allows them to pull more water out of the aquifer?
So the city's current permit allows for the city to invest in alternative water supplies, which would be the Floridian Aquifer. The Biscayne Aquifer in South Florida is basically capped at what you're currently allowed to use, 55 MGD. If additional water supply is needed, you'd have to go to an alternative source, which requires a higher level of treatment. The alternative source that the city has planned for is the Floridian Aquifer. The city's existing permit allows it to construct, I don't know, something like 15 Floridian Aquifer water supply wells. Some of them are located at the Dixie Wellfield, some at the Prospect Wellfield.
At a much higher cost.
It comes at a higher cost.
Which then comes to higher user costs. So, okay, so it's still 20 years away, but I think that we need to have, do we have a process in place where five years from now we're relooking at the projections or something so that we don't get hit with this? I know that our water rates are planned to go up, you know, they're going to be 50% higher in the next five years. So we're planning a, you know, 12% to 17% increase each year. But at some point, if we feel as if we're going to have to go the Florida aquifer instead of the Biscayne, I would hope that we have some kind of a chuck mark down the road that if we hit this, we're moving faster with our usage than we need, and we need to have a safeguard or talk about not selling our water to other people as much.
Is it reviewed in that, before that time span?
So the, this, the state updates its Lower East Coast Water Supply Plan every five years. And that five-year update cycle requires the city to update its demand forecast and relook at this every five years.
Yes, I'll just add on that a little bit. So each month, we actually report to the state how much we're withdrawing water supply-wise, as well as annually, we submit like a water report to the district showing how much withdrawal we're using, even from our large users. In addition to that, like any type of capital-type project would be planned during the normal CIP process, which water projects, sewer projects, utility projects are programmed into our CIP plan, which is, you know, funded every year, so.
So yeah, it's reviewed on them?
Correct, correct.
All the time. How about, there was some talk, I think I've heard, about the Biscayne Aquifer maybe having some seawater infiltration or something that with the rising tides and so forth, we heard of, you know, was that reviewed, thought of, discussed at all?
So as part of our review, preparation of the Water Supply Plan Update, we did review the city's data for saltwater intrusion. The city has 10 saltwater intrusion monitoring wells. So we reviewed those data, and we did, excuse me. The saltwater intrusion front is also monitored by the state of Florida. There's many wells up and down the coast, monitoring wells, that are used to try to identify where that saltwater front occurs. And so the city does, I'm sorry, did I answer your question?
Yeah, more or less, just that. And then, I mean, is the plant able to be adapted if it was found that there's more saltwater coming in than was originally calculated? Like, is it, yeah?
You know, that, that's a good question. I don't think I can answer it off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yeah.
Something for them to make sure they're on is?
Absolutely.
Being able to react. I mean, obviously, there's things planned and going, but if we need to reserve a little area in the corner for more filtration, if we determine that more saltwater is entering than we anticipated?
Yes.
That's that. Yes, Mr. Gannon?
Can you give me a little info on the C-21 reservoir? Where does that fit in? Is it a certain amount? I know it's something we're supplementing, we're in agreement to supplement. Is it small potatoes, or does it help?
So the city did invest in the C-51 reservoir. It, the city purchased 3 million gallons per day of Biscayne Aquifer offset. And what this allows the city to do is to take their base permit, which is 52.5 MGD, and add 3 MGD to it to drink that additional amount of water. And the city has just submitted their first submittal to the district asking for use of that water starting this month.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys' time and expertise.
Thank you.
All right. So do we have a communication to the city commission?
We need an action on that. So you're acting as a local planning agency? So Chair, what we would entertain now as, in your role as the local planning agency, is a recommendation to the commission as to whether or not to adopt the change.
Do we have a motion to adopt, or?
ULDR amendment?
No, it's not.
No, it's a comprehensive plan amendment. It can be a simple motion proven, to prove the amendment.
Okay, so I can just do an all-in-favor?
No, 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 it needs to be a motion.
Okay.
I think we should let Alex do this one.
Oh, no, that's not fair.
Give him one day of break. Baptism by fire.
Read number three and put the case number in there, in the blank. There you go. Yeah. With your mic on. Yeah, just read it out loud. Put your mic on.
Motion to recommend approval. I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the comprehensive plan, case number UDP-L25004.
Zero second.
I'll second.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Buckley?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Mr. Gannon?
Yes.
Ms. McCartney?
Yes.
And Chairman Teague?
Yes.
Vote passes.
Very good. Now.
Chair, 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 before we, before we quit for the night, I just want to ask the board a question. You know, this whole business of rezoning townhomes, I get that we should not be involved with a townhome. However, does anybody agree or feel that when someone is, has a project, but let's say 10 or more townhomes in a situation like this, wouldn't you rather have the opportunity that that, a sizable development like that does have to come back to P&amp;Z? I know it's going to require a ULDR change or code change, but it would take us away from these situations like we had tonight. And I don't want to stifle development by any means, but I just feel so bad for the neighborhood, and I feel bad having to vote on a rezoning of this magnitude where we're never going to see it again. So I think there's a way to solve it. I want to know how you guys feel.
If townhouses were allowed in the current zoning, I think that would have solved it. But townhomes weren't allowed, and they wanted to do townhomes, it seemed like, based on, because townhomes will sell for higher than a condo. Condos are really tough to sell. So I think that was the key for them, was to be able to build townhouses. And the way the code was currently, the way I understood it, was that they couldn't.
Correct, but, but, in this situation, if there was something in the code that said, if you want to go for the rezoning, and it's of this magnitude, then we're going to ask you, we're going to put it through the, not just the DRC process, but the P&amp;Z process. The neighborhood, this whole business that they can go to DRC, I mean, seriously? You go a technical review. You have very little input.
Yeah, it should still go to P&amp;Z over.
And I really want to do something to protect or at least facilitate more involvement from a neighborhood if it's that big of a project, if you guys agree.
Yeah, something like over 10 units, or over eight units, or over 12 units goes to mandatory approvals the same way that the current zoning would have went.
Yeah, and even, and even, you guys, even if they have the right to do it, it's not a bad idea.
I guess that becomes a question for the staff or the city attorney, what the process would be to even attempt something like that. It would require changing multiple zonings, correct? Under the ULDR?
So we have a table under the ULDR that designates the level of review for a project. So it would require an amendment to that table and some research to justify the threshold at which you're going to have the town-owned communities of a certain number be treated as a site plan Level 3 versus what they currently are.
Maybe staff could just do a quick review and get back to us about what would be involved in doing that?
I think, Kevin, we've got to ask the city commission for permission.
Well, they could do the research to tell us what we have to do.
I think we just need to make a request to the commission, and then if the commission says yes, we'd like staff to look into it, then we're, then we're good. Am I correct?
You're correct. We have a separations of powers issue. You all are a arm of the city commission, whereas staff works and is directed by the city manager in terms of their task.
Got it.
So should we make a motion, or what's everybody?
Sure, would you like to frame a communication? Can we do it under the communication?
That would be a motion.
Would you like to frame just a quote or the paragraph that we could say yes or no to with you? I mean.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we request city staff to communicate to the city commission that we feel that large townhome developments currently do not fall under any review by the Planning and Zoning Board, and we would like to request that that be looked at for a sizable townhome project, number to be determined on staff, but look into that. I don't know if I said it right.
Can I suggest a reframing?
So it's a communication to the city commission requesting evaluation of townhome projects to determine whether or not larger projects should be reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Yeah, but when you say the word larger, I want to be, I want to be a little bit more specific.
Eight to 10 units or more.
Yeah, that's good, Chair, yeah. Creating a threshold in which they do come back. And we can, when you're talking, when we're talking, when this communication comes up, we can cite what happened tonight as a perfect example.
Okay. And the commission typically does ask details in terms of what spurs the, so, yeah.
So Patrick, will you go to the commission meeting and reiterate it? You want to do that?
Yeah, I mean, we'll pose the question and see if the commission is interested in having the staff review it, you know, and we can talk to our.
Usually, somebody has to be at the meeting, and they'll say, okay, what's this communication? It's better for one of us or you, especially as the chairman, to be there and explain why we feel this would be a good idea.
That's the pleasure of the board.
If you guys all agree.
Yeah, I mean, if that's the pleasure of the board. Yeah, I don't mind. The question, we're looking at it and so forth as well, and again, a threshold of whatever, eight to 10-plus units.
I think the unnecessary drama like that, that shouldn't have been as difficult as it was.
And they were as similar as they could be, basically.
Their argument, I mean, they didn't, it was really unnecessary.
And they don't, they don't have an opportunity other than going to DRC, and it's not a place to have a conversation. It's a technical meeting.
Okay.
Chair, if I can recommend a voice vote on the communication?
Okay. All in favor of the communication to the city commission? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Please say no. Okay. Appears to be unanimous communication.